Monday, December ninth, twenty twenty four, meeting of the East Hampton Board of Education. If you would please rise and join me in a little meeting.
I'd like to leave in. For the United States of America and through the Republic or just stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is the mission of the East Hampton Public Schools to partner with our families and community to prepare confident, compassionate, and collaborative learners who navigate a complex global society. We have no student staff recognitions this evening, liaisons. Neil reached out to me and said he did not have any updates for this evening, and I do not see any inter-board liaison with us this evening. Audience of citizens. Nobody's on Zoom. Nobody's on Zoom. All right, hearing none. Consent agenda this evening includes the minutes from the November twenty fifth meeting. Do I have a motion?
Oh, second.
Motion and second, very discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, committee report. We're up to you guys fast today.
So we're gonna start after selectivities that EHHS Writing Centers continuing to work with students. Several tutors have been helping students with their papers and essays for class during and after school. NHS is carrying on with planning for their upcoming events, for example, to Fulton Night, which will help raise money for stalls for graduation, midterm tutoring, and collecting raffle items for the Spring Talent Show. Spanish Club is raising money during lunch waves through for their Alpha Teacher Event. Whichever teacher receives the most money by the end of the week will dress up as an up during the upcoming pep rally. So we're very, very excited for that. The Class of Twenty Twenty Six is raising money for their class by selling a border bell ringer hats. And the Technology and Engineering Club is hosting a STEM Challenge After School on December eighteenth. Students can participate in fun winter activities and win a variety of prizes. Some of the challenges include building an ice fortress out of index cards, making ramps to see which sled will move the farthest, and creating a design to prevent candy cubes from cracking. And this upcoming Wednesday After School, an IRS Club will be hosting their ABC Women Shelter wrapping party. Students are gonna stay after school to help wrap the gifts each Xbox collected and gift for their given ABC Women Shelter's child.
Both the boys and girl, boys and girls basketball team have began practices. Girls' basketball had a scrimmage against Coventry on Saturday in preparation for their season as well. The Boys and Girls Indoor Track Team have also began practices. All winter sport athletes are very excited for their upcoming season. Also, baseball has also begun indoor lifting and conditioning in preparation for their season in the spring. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. All right, update by administrators.
Good evening. I hope you all had a wonderful holiday. Since our last meeting, I was able to share with you that we have made some transitions at Center School, but we're really pleased to formally welcome Mr. Moore to his role as interim principal of Center School. We were able to announce right before the holiday to families that Lily Cordero will service the long-term staff for the remainder of the school year in fourth grade. We are looking forward to welcoming Lily to visit Center School this week and again next week when she will meet her students. Ms. Cordero will start her position on January second. It's hard to believe when we return from the upcoming break that will be approaching the midpoint in the school year. Our instructional specialist team is already planning for our January assessment window. We, this is planned for shortly after the winter break. It will be a formal opportunity to measure student growth and achievements since September. Additionally, our instructional specialist team will be reviewing the performance of all students and tiered interventions later this month to determine if any adjustments are required for instructional planning and placement. Our written wisdom implementation plan continues, and this Wednesday, our pilot teachers, who were referred to as our success coaches, because they're sticking with the program this year to really, as I shared with you, learn the ins and outs, they have a formal professional learning on Wednesday of this week to deepen their knowledge of the program. And next week, prior to the winter break, the District and Building Administration, along with our literacy specialists, will attend a session with written wisdom to ensure our implementation plan and professional learning schedule reflects best practices based on their experience of implementing the program. We are very excited about the work we see coming out of the success coaches' classrooms and are really excited about this choice, and I look forward to being able to bring more feedback to you from our teachers as we get further into the process. And this is a special time of year in our schools, which you'll hear about. There's a lot of activity across the month for our students, but I just want to take a moment to highlight the efforts of our K-12 music team as this is a season of formal presentations and performances, as they hold their concerts to demonstrate the growth of our many musicians across the district. The high school recently held their concert. The Center School Concert is this Thursday, and we look forward to our middle school performance in January.
Yeah, I think we can hear you anywhere.
You can hear me. I'm worried about that. Everybody can hear me. How about now? That's a sound, is it?
Yeah.
Right, well, good evening. Despite the mounting excitement that Mary just mentioned related to the holiday season at Memorial School, our learners have been hard at work. Right before Thanksgiving, our third-grade classrooms participated in a full-day science rotation that focused on living things and how we can learn through the study of inherited and environmental traits, as well as through fossils and teeth. Each grade three teacher facilitated one portion of the study, and students moved from room to room, learning all about living things. As part of Grade Two's Long Ago Unit, many students made butter out of whipping cream. They used teamwork to shake the dar, and then they tried it out on some bread, and I understand everyone liked it. Our second graders also took a field trip to the Mark Twain House, where they learned about what it was like to grow up in the Gilded Age. This Friday, Grade One students will engage in a snowy steam day. They'll learn about Arctic animals, play winter-themed math games, explore the symmetry of a snowflake, and investigate the states of matter through the life cycle of a snowman. As a culmination of all the hard work that's gone into our students' acquisition of letter names and sounds, the kindergarten team will be putting on their annual ABC Fashion Show on Wednesday and Thursday afternoon. Their excited families will be invited to the Memorial School Cafeteria to watch their learners proudly showcase their handmade ABC fashions. And we will end our week with a monthly cheetah pride assembly. As is always the case, students will be encouraged to wear their cheetah pride spirit wear. However, this Friday is also CCMC's PJ Day for the kids. Therefore, with a one-dollar donation, our students are invited to wear PJs to school. The money will go to purchase pajamas for children having to endure extended stays at CCMC. And finally, I'd like to thank the PTO for hosting another wonderful event at Memorial School on Wednesday evening. They will be facilitating a family holiday shop. It will begin at five-thirty and will offer affordable gift options for children to purchase for their loved ones. Several local crafters will also have tables set up to appeal to the caregivers while their children are busy shopping for their family.
Good evening. It was nice to welcome back our students from the Thanksgiving recess last Monday, and here's a recap of some of the events that our Center School learners have been involved in over the past couple of weeks. Center School's longstanding activity, Senior Buddy Gift Baskets, is up and running. Through a partnership with the East Hampton Senior Center, each classroom is paired with a local senior. Then the students from each class fill a gift bag or basket with items tailored to the seniors' interests and some handmade greetings. This collaboration allows our students to experience the act of giving and the joy that it brings. Our fifth-grade band held a full rehearsal last week. This was their final warm-up before they perform for their peers and teachers this Wednesday afternoon at Center School. And that concert sets them up for success for their performance in the winter concert this Thursday evening at the high school for their families and friends. The fourth and fifth grade combined chorus have their final rehearsal tomorrow in preparation for the same show. Fourth graders from Mrs. Nichols' class continued a twenty-five-year collaboration called Book Buddies with the East Hampton Nursery School last week. They visited the nursery school's four-year-old class. Together, the students shared their love of reading and engaged in a hands-on craft activity. The fourth graders serve as positive role models for the future Center School Alliance. This past Friday, students participated in our monthly PBIS Assembly. During the assembly, our Pride of the Month members were announced. These students, one from each homeroom and one that is nominated by the Unified Arts Team, were celebrated for their acts of empathy. Empathy was the profile of a graduate characteristic that we discussed in the assembly last month. The pride members then enjoyed, engaged in a minute-to-win-it-style game to the cheers of their classmates and peers. And as part of the Assembly, Center School was recognized by the Special Olympics as a national unified champion banner school. Barb Horn, a representative from the Connecticut Interscholastic Athletic Conference, delivered the banner. A Special Olympics Unified Champion Banner School has an inclusive school climate and ensues a sense of collaboration, engagement, and respect for all members of the student body. A unified champion school receiving national banner recognition is one that has demonstrated commitment to inclusion by meeting ten national standards of excellence. These standards were developed by a national panel of leaders from Special Olympics and the education community. Special thanks go to Sue Freeman, Center School's physical therapist, for supporting our Unified Arts Program. Or I'm sorry, our Unified Sports Program. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Last time Emily shared our plans for the Unified Sports Pep Rally, and it turned out to be an incredible afternoon. Captains from each fall sports team took the spotlight, proudly introducing their squads and celebrating their achievements from the season. The rally then shifted to an exhilarating basketball game featuring staff members and the Unified Sports Team, with students in the stands cheering passionately for both sides. The sense of camaraderie among the students was really inspirational, and it was a great way to kick off the holiday weekend. The Early Act Club has been raising funds to support the ABC Women's Center in their holiday drive. With the donations collected, the club is purchasing gifts for several families in need. This afternoon, members came together to wrap all the gifts, preparing to deliver them to the center. For several years, we've maintained a strong partnership with Sandy Hook Promise, an organization dedicated to fostering safe and inclusive school environments. Together, we've implemented programs that help students recognize the warning signs of someone at risk of harming themselves or others while equipping them with the confidence to seek help from a trusted adult. Next week, during advisory, sixth graders will watch a video outlining the three key steps. Recognize warning signs and threats, take action immediately and seriously, and say something to a trusted adult or use our anonymous recording system. While seventh and eighth graders will review a refresher video reinforcing this message. The eighth-grade capstone experience is officially underway. Each advisory group is supported by two certified teacher partners, and throughout the year will have designated capstone check-in weeks. During these sessions, advisors will meet individually with students to provide guidance and support for their independent learning projects. The project has been broken down into manageable steps for our eighth graders, with both ELA and social studies classes playing a key role, from teaching research skills using credible sources to creating a capstone chronicle article to promote their projects. Last week, students began brainstorming to narrow down their topics of interest. Thank you.
Hey, good evening. This past week, Cindy Sienna, our beloved EHHS Head Custodian, retired after thirty-five-plus years of service to East Hampton Public Schools. Our staff surprised her at our faculty meeting with cake and gift certificates to restaurants she loves to go to, and she will be missed. Ironically, this past Thursday, it found Q with Stone, and she left it up at four AM to commit to the ice and sidelines. I'm sure she was laughing about that. This past Saturday, the Rotary Club sponsors annual East Hampton Breakfast with Santa. Our Interact students volunteered, and the building was busy with Christmas excitement all day. As I've said a couple of times previously, next week, representatives from Electric Boat will be visiting the high school to discuss career opportunities available to our students. And on January eighth, ninth, the E-Camp, which is Goodwin University's trailer, will be at the high school to talk to students about opportunities for the Goodwin University Program. And believe it or not, when we come back from the holiday vacation, we'll be gearing up for scheduling for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Our counselors will be going to the middle school and meeting with students there, as well as the high school, to discuss course selection for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Thank you.
Subcommittee reports. Personnel.
Oh, that's good. Nothing to report?
Thank you. I'll thank you.
Well, if you won't, it's all right.
Finance, transportation, building and grounds.
We have a meeting after this meeting.
Yes, we do.
Communications. Which we have done, so superintendent's report, sorry.
Good evening, members of the board. So first, I want to lengthen the board now that the district did host an informational session last Tuesday evening for East Hampton Public Schools families. The purpose of it has to do with the Rotary Exchange Program. I do want to thank Karen Terry, Rotary Club's coordinator, for their exchange program. Sheriff Colard was an assistant, assisted, who was in attendance. Assistant Principal Russell for their assistance with the event as well. We're very hopeful that for the upcoming school year that we'll have perhaps a student or two that will be with us from the exchange program, as well as perhaps a student or two who may be interested in a summer-type exchange program that's available to them. So we'll keep you updated as to how that process unfolds. But at this point in time, we did have some families that were in attendance expressing interest in the program for the upcoming school year. Fiscal Year Twenty-Six budget, so this is a little bit more detailed because it touches on current as well as next year. After this evening's meeting, the Finance, Transportation, Building and Grounds Committee will be meeting. To, one, hear about the fiscal year twenty-five update, which is here that we are currently in, as well as the plan for our fiscal year twenty-six project budget deliberation. Fiscal Year Twenty-Six budget has been a process of development for all of us that's been in place. We've been working on it for the past several months and we're continuing to closely follow our fiscal year twenty-five expenditures to date in drafting next year's recommendation to the board. In terms of our current fiscal year twenty-five, which is the basis by which you go from to develop draft proposal for fiscal year twenty-six, our budget is continuing to trend higher than anticipated due to additional outplacements. A lot of it is relevant to special education, and that's been commonplace for you over the past several years, as well as transportation costs and then funding that we were receiving from student tuition, which helped us to offset some classified salaries. So we have now a student who was placed in East Hampton, and that student has gone back to their district. So therefore, it has left us without that tuition that would have been used to offset classified salaries. Why I share this with you is in all transparency, but also to make it be understood that, you know, as we look to the fiscal year twenty-six plan, we really have got to monitor where we closely are. I had a lengthy conversation today with Town Manager Cox relevant to it, because I know that year over year, as a district, we have over expended based on what the projected expenditure plan was for the year. So that will be part of the conversations we'll have this evening with the subcommittee as we begin to plan ahead for you as a board for the deliberation process. And then as per bold charter and policy, your charter reads that as of March first, the fiscal year twenty-six plan is sent to the town. And the charter has it as being the fifteenth date that the board of finances is to be unreceived of that. So the deliberations being those that need to take place to the months of January and February. So we'll be working on all of the, all of the documents as it relates to that. But certainly, that has already begun. H-Back update. Town Manager Cox, Director of Facilities, Fontanella, and I have been working together to really develop a course of action for addressing Public Act twenty-three, one sixty-seven, which requires school districts to take several measures in addressing H-Back airflow as well as climate control within our schools. So the act is not about particulate matter. It's about just airflow within the rooms and the H-Back control systems that schools need to have to be able to enable it, as well as how do we monitor, how are we able to regulate climate within the classrooms? So as far as this year is concerned, there has been no release of grant funds. This was a mandate, as you are all aware, by twenty thirty. We have to have all of our systems audited, as well as a recommended plan for remediation. It also requires that twenty percent of school buildings need to be done each year until you get to the point of twenty thirty. We were very hopeful the past two years the state has released grants. Unfortunately, to date, we have not had any release of grants. So this becomes what we recognize as an unfunded mandate until there is a release of grants. I did have a conversation with some people I know from an architectural firm that knows specifically with school buildings in the state of Connecticut. And as that individual was sharing with me, there seems to be some consensus that the state will be releasing money for this. It's a matter of when. But certainly, I will update the board. We'll be looking at that, if any, H-Back grant money, because that will only help the Capital Committee of the Town help to offset whatever is going to be needed for us to remediate for our schools. It's very hard right now to understand exactly what's required. We need really some trained eyes to come in here to review our systems and then give us some recommendations. That's been talked about on our end, but I know there's already been conversations that have happened at the Capital Committee, where Board Vice Chair is actually a part of that, and that will be a continuing discussion that will happen with capital to move forward. Our legislative update, just to provide for you, so we know a month or a month away from the beginning of the legislative season. There are two sections that are coming up that are happening with legislators that we will be having a district presence at. The first is on December eighteenth. Cave Area Eight, which is the area here at East Hampton, will be hosting their regional legislative breakfast at Westbrook High School from nine to ten o'clock in the morning. And then the Shoreline Superintendent's Group, in addition to Learn, which is our local Regional Education Service Center, RESC, is hosting their event on January tenth at eight-thirty. These legislative events are great because it puts you in contact directly with your legislators. It gives you an opportunity to talk about school-related matters, whereas, you know, our legislators are hearing from a wide spectrum of stakeholders in lots of different areas. So districts and the state has worked hard to try to at least get some lobbying efforts around schools. And your legislators, to be honest, I have attended these for years. They're very receptive to hearing, and it's important that voices are heard so that they understand as these topics come up and they're discussed whether they should be there to support them or perhaps question them a little bit further. You can't always change the minds of your legislators, but certainly, the reality is it's good for them to have the knowledge so that they can make informed decisions and they understand how those decisions are going to affect their constituencies. So unfortunately, this past Thursday, as was noted earlier, we did experience our first weather-related cancellation for the school year. Hopefully, that will be our last for the year. The snow event, although I won't call it a storm, was much more than we had anticipated, and it was the timing of it that created some issues and conditions that would have been difficult. You know, as a, as a district leader, you know, we think in terms of our buses and the transportation, although they're pretty goodness now. But we also have to think about all the families that are on the roads. You have to think about your students that are in the high school that are driving around the roads. So the decision was made to, to unfortunately, go from a delay to a cancellation. So I'm here to announce that our last day of school is no longer June tenth. It has now moved to June eleventh. And two, three more things to mention here, Capital Region Emergency Planning Committee. So contingent from East Hampton has been asked to provide an after-action report regarding our crisis response of October first to the Capital Region Emergency Planning Committee this upcoming Thursday. The committee has been in place for several years, and it enables the sharing of intelligence related to emergency planning for school districts. And it's attended by state and local law enforcement, security staff from districts, whether they be ASOs, SROs, security staff, as well as school district leadership. These meetings are extremely well-attended, and attendance at them are easily fifty-plus people from area, from area districts in the Capital Region that are there. It just so happens that the date that we're going to be there this Thursday, the Region Three damas coordinator is going to be there. The former Region Three damas coordinator, who still has a lot of involvement at the state, is going to be there, as well as the lead for the Center for School Safety and Crisis Prevention, Kim Myers. And then C-TIC, or the Connecticut Intelligence Center, who I believe is the state's least, but now it's the state. They will also be in attendance at this meeting. So it's an opportunity for us to share our experiences, the things that we learned from it in order to try to help other districts as, as these events are occurring elsewhere. Project Graduation fundraiser, just here to make a quick plug here. So this Wednesday, the Town Tavern is going to be hosting a fundraising event for Project Graduation from eleven to nine, so it's running all day. A portion of the sales profits are going to be donated to offset the cost of this year's Project Graduation, which is going to be held at the Sports Center in Shelton. The date hasn't been determined at this point in time. So if you, whether you're going to dine in or you're going to order out, a portion of those proceeds will go to Project Graduation. And I have been informed today that there will be a raffle table that's, that's some great raffles. So anybody who is going to be stopping in there, please take a look at that raffle table and help support our high school seniors as they move toward, towards graduation in that wonderful evening that has been traditionally provided to the student. And then last, I do want to recognize and congratulate both Cindy Sienna on her retirement after many years of service. And I do want to acknowledge with the board, Irene Cuck was nominated, was named our November Employee of the Month for the district, being technology coordinator and support staff at the high school. She's been instrumental in so many things, the website that you get to see every single day, the photographs, many of the photographs that you see. She has had her hands in it, and she really has been a part of that nexus of information that we put out there to the community. So congratulations to Irene, and congratulations to Cindy. That is my update, and I'm going to go into the enrollment report now. I'm not going to leave here and not forget about that. So real quick, I gotta, you need to say it correctly. You will be attending those two meetings. Okay, you need to say it correctly. Yes, yes. So only changes in the enrollment, I'm going to make a note. I'm going to keep drawing you to the figure that it will come up later in the budgeting. So if you, based on the December second, two thousand twenty-four report, kindergarten is at ninety-eight students in district. That's an important number, and as their projections are projecting, they'll hundred-fourth for next year. But that just gives you an idea of where we currently are standing with kindergarten. In terms of month-to-month and where we stand, so I'll go just based on where we were in November to where we are now. But I'm also going to tell you where we were on October first, because the October first, the October first enrollment is the state, it's the state draw for all of our enrollment within the district. So a lot of our budget materials are developed around those October first numbers through PSIS. But just from last month to this month, Memorial School has increased by three students. However, from October to current, we have increased by ten students at Memorial. So that just kind of shows you the variation that could happen in schools and where you experience that over the course of the year. We are down two students from last month at Center School, and that has remained constant from where we currently were on October first. We have gone down two students since November at the middle school, and we have gone down three students at the middle school. We have remained constant at the high school from where we were in October. But we also have gone down an outplaced, or excuse me, a magnet student out of the district. We've gone down one. So overall, since, since November, or since November, we have been down, we're down two students in the overall. However, we are up five students as a district from where we actually were back in October. Okay? Any questions with enrollment?
Yeah, so does the magnet student that we're down, is that student in the high school?
I should have looked into that to find out if that student came back to the high school. I will find that information out for you.
Good question. Colchester is open at Magnet School, while I hear a fake candidate. Do we have this thing that's going to have any impact on our enrollment?
It could. I have, did have an opportunity to read the River East article and had some very brief communications with the Colchester Superintendent. But anytime a magnet program happens to show up, there is always the possibility it becomes another school of choice. Just as you have your ag, you have your book, your book programs. This is now a magnet program that has received approval from the State Department of Education. I think a lot of it will be based on how much that is marketed, and I think decisions will be based on. And I think decisions will be based on whether or not the public safety element of it is of interest to families. As well as distance from Colchester. I would anticipate that there will be some degree of interest in this district. But I'm going to take this moment to say that in the short time that I have been in this district. You have an incredible high school program that offers an incredible amount of of courses. That meet different needs and interests of students. And it brings a larger conversation, which I know is tangential to this magnet program, what's the Groffley magnets? Is that when you look at the performance of East Hampton High School, you look at the course offerings that you're provided. And now, as I was just talking with our two students here who already have decisions of where they're going to school, which speaks to their preparation for it. I just want to highlight what a great program you have at this high school. And I think it's going to be a tough decision for a parent to make, albeit it could be an interesting pull for public safety. But I'm going to tell you, they're going to be giving up an awful lot of more programming you have here at East Hampton High School.
Thank you.
We are very excited tonight to present as our program presentation this evening, our preschool team. Who's going to talk about a program that we are so proud of at Memorial School, our preschool. And the different programming within the preschool community at Memorial School. As well as Joey and I will talk with you a little bit about the N I A C accreditation process. And so tonight, joining us from Memorial Schools preschool team, we have Stacy Gibson, Erin Patron and Jamie Legwire. And they have prepared a presentation for you. So we're just going to take a minute to transition and get that presentation up. And I'll invite you guys if you want to come on up to the podium. And they've done a really great job of preparing the presentation to highlight the scheduling of our preschool program. You're going to get to see some of our preschoolers in action and hear a little bit about that entry process for students. As you know, we have preschool programming for three and four year olds. We have students who, the day they turn three, we welcome them to Memorial School. And so without further ado, Erin and Jamie and Stacy, thank you so much for being here and for all your work on the presentation. We're excited to share with you tonight.
Thank you. So actually, some of those new friends that Tim was speaking about are brand new preschoolers. We're getting a full batch of newbies before Christmas, so their early Christmas present. But we would like to thank you guys so much for having us here. Preschool is always a little bit of an interesting entity in the public school. We are very fortunate in East Hampton to have two different types of programming in our school. So we're going to share a little bit about that with you guys right now. So I'm Erin Patron. And this is.
I'm Jamie Legwire.
Stacy Gibson.
So Jamie and I both teach integrated preschool. We'll tell you about that in a minute. And Stacy is the Smart Start preschool teacher. So we have three different teachers, but two of us are doing one program and Stacy's program looks a little different. We'll tell you about that.
All right, so there's a lot of different people in preschool. Sorry that that picture is a little smaller. So with the integrated preschool program, we have children with special education needs. So we have a lot of different teachers that come in the classroom. So Mrs. Blighy and Mrs. Leaching are speech pathologists, so they they work with children that have speech delays. Mrs. Quinn and Mrs. Freeman are our physical therapists and occupational therapists. So think of occupational as your fine motor, your writing, your drawing, your cutting. And physical therapy is that gross motor, so jumping, skipping, hopping, all that fun stuff. We also have Mrs. Alora, who's our school psychologist, who works with students for who have social needs. Same with Mrs. Kasprowski, who's our so school, 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 social worker. That's a tongue twister. Miss Dyer work is our B C B A, so we have students that have autism who are on the spectrum and she makes their plans for them. In our classroom, we are, we have our teachers, but we also have paraprofessionals in the classroom. So Erin and I have Mrs. Alfred and Mrs. Carrero. So one of them is in the morning with us and one of them is in the afternoon. And then Stacy has Mrs. Wykander, who is her full time paraprofessional in the classroom.
Oh, sure. All right, East Hampton Public Schools preschool program philosophy, we're a N I A C accredited program. And we create a nurturing, caring and happy atmosphere for preschool children that is both safe and reassuring for them and their parents. We encourage children to learn through play. We engage children developmentally with developmental appropriate experiences. Excuse me, self-confidence and independence are fostered along with experiences needed for social success. Families are considered an integral part of the success of their child's learning process and they're encouraged to participate as well in our preschool programs.
So our day is very, very busy. The average attention span of a three, four and five year old is less than about seven minutes. So we try to keep those days really grooving and moving for our kiddos. They go to specials, so they go to music, art, library. They have center time, that is when we work on more of those small group activities. We look at fine motor, gross motor skills, all of that. We do free play, play is so important in preschool. Recession, we have read aloud. Snack is incredible learning opportunity because everybody likes to eat when they're three and four and five. We do a lot of the programs that you see in the older grades. We have integrity introduced in preschool. We do found foundations with our kiddos. And there's a lot of valuable learning, you know, calendar, time and our morning meeting time.
All right, so a little bit about integrated. So like I said, integrated is our special education program. So Erin and I are the integrated preschool program. So we have three year olds that come in the morning and then four year olds that come in the afternoon. So there are difference in three and four year olds on there. So this is just a little quick update of our schedule. So it's quick, we are here for two and a half hours. The morning kids, our doors open at eight forty and they leave at eleven ten. And then the afternoon group comes in at twelve thirty eight and leaves at three ten. So we have two and a half hours to get everything done. So it goes by really quick. Play for the three year olds is our most important aspect. They are coming to school, some of them have never been away from mom and dad, so learning how to handle that separation is important. And learning how to socialize, learning how to play, learning how to take direction, learning how to transition. Those are all the foundations for our three year olds is really working on that play. Most of them have, you know, three year olds are very territorial over their things. So, you know, being able to share is a very important part. Morning meeting, we do a lot of songs, singing, calendar, all that great stuff. We do focus a little bit on letters with our three year olds. It's mostly an introduction. We're not expecting three year olds to be able to name all their letters at the end of the school year. But being able to name important ones, the letter of their names, the letter of their mom, dad, all those important names. We do do centers, so we do different activities. We do literacy, math. During those times, we are running a center, our paraprofessionals running a center. And then we're also looking for some independence, so maybe the blocks are open or Plato is open. And they're working on being able to engage in different activities. We start the beginning of the school year at about five minutes and then usually by June, we're up to about eight. So that's a good attention span that shows you from the beginning. And as Erin said, with the three year olds, every time a child who is in birth to three or receives special education services turns three, then they come in. So our numbers, we start off a little bit smaller in the beginning of the year. But we grow very much throughout the school year with our special education students. So this year we started with seven, I've already gained one, Erin has gained one tomorrow. Another one tomorrow. So we might start off at like seven students from the beginning of the school year and end at all the way up to, well, we don't have a cap. So it could be up to fifteen, sixteen kids, so that grows. And then our four year olds, same thing, except a lot more about the academics. We really want to make them as prepared as they can be for kindergarten. The great thing about being in our school is that they get to go to the specials. So when they go to kindergarten, they know how to walk in the hallway, which is very important to walk in the hallway and not touch everything and stay in line. So we really work on all of that stuff in preschool, but really working on letters, numbers, all those things, getting them ready for kindergarten. So that's a little bit about the integrated program and then Stacy has a different one.
So whereas their programs are two and a half hours a day, my program is six hours a day, the Smart Start preschool schedule. All the Smart Start children are four years old when they come to me and they all transition to kindergarten next year. Well, this year totally, everyone's going to kindergarten this year because of all the new state regulations. So we're a drop off pickup program with me, so there is no transportation provided. My class comes at eight fifty and they leave at two fifty. So it's six straight hours with me. Just like the other two preschool programs, we have a morning meeting and a read aloud and there's morning routines and activities with the group. We do go to music, art, gym and library, just like all the big kids, and it totally gets them ready for next year. Like Jamie said earlier, stack time is very important. The snack in my class, they learn how to set the tables, they have place mats, there's napkin helpers, there's cup holders, they pour their own water. They're learning lots of self-help skills as well. We have academic centers for forty five minutes in the morning in my classroom and forty five minutes in the afternoon. So we do focus a strong sense of academic time in my room. In those, we have literacy and math centers, which are held by myself and my para and as well as black dramatic play sensory centers. There are independent centers as well going on. Our centers are about eight minutes rotation for the morning and the afternoons. After that, we have something called play centers in the classroom because as Erin and Jamie have stated, play is so important in preschool. They're learning how to interact, how to share, how to engage with others, make eye contact, ask questions. So much learning happens in play centers. This is where they get to pick the activities that are of interest to them and where they want to rotate. Whether it's cars, blacks, trucks, dramatic play, you know, dolls, painting, sensory stations. They get to pick, they rotate and they have a half an hour to do that every day where it's self-selected and we engage with them as well. It's also a time, like the children in my class, we learn how to bike around the school and scooter around the school. It's time where they have activities and times to do that. I teach them all cooperative games like duck, duck, goose, red light, green light, like all the old school games that they get to enjoy. And they they really like it. We have recess, we have our own playscape out in the back and we also utilize the courtyard if you see any of the cozy coops or sandboxes as well. Our playscape is fenced in, so we have all our littles together. I don't know if I mentioned this in the beginning, where their class throughout the year, I'm allowed eighteen students, one to nine ratio. That's why I do have a paraprofessional and we're full at eighteen. We were full at eighteen at the beginning of the year as well. We go to recess with the kindergartners, we have our own table, we rotate through the lunchroom, just like the big kids. And they love it, they're totally prepared for next year, you know, they get to win the golden tray, just like the big kids, so it's super exciting. We do do hegemony and foundations, there's a video clip of that at the end, so we're learning our letters, we're learning our sounds, et cetera, rhyming and they love it. Right from there, we have rest time, which is mandatory, so to speak, through N I A C. We have, we have quiet rest time on our mats, we listen to music, we sing and then we follow that up with books. They get to select books every week and we rotate and read with them in small groups or they look at their books with peers on the carpet. After that, we have music time, yoga time, read aloud time or an outside activity. Just to get them a little movement break before we go back into our academic like centers in the afternoon, then we eat again. There's a lot of eating in preschool where they have snack again with their peers. And then it's the end of the day meetings, songs, and like I said, we're a parent drop off pickup, so we leave at two fifty.
So integrated preschool, this is just more information. We have four sessions at Memorial School. So Jamie and I each have a three year old morning class and we each have a four year old afternoon class. And like we mentioned before, it is, it's a way to integrate our typically developing peers with students with special needs. It today was a prime example of the perfection that this can be. I have a student who is currently a selective new and she will speak when she is with the classmates, her classmates. So they today had her saying long sentences and it was just the coolest thing ever to learn from their peers. Sometimes it's a lot better than learning from an adult. Most of our special education students do transition from birth to three, which is a state run program. So like we keep saying, the day you turn three, we get to receive a nice, you know, a new little preschooler. They are wonderful. We do also though, find students throughout, you know, child find, so just in the community. Day, local daycares may refer a child. So we definitely gain students from different aspects of the town. Our program allows students to benefit from peer interaction, but it also fosters an inclusive environment. Our kids are so compassionate, they're so empathetic. They understand that sometimes their friends right now are not speaking. Sometimes their friends use a picture to communicate or an iPad to talk. And to see that acceptance starting at three, to see that inclusion starting with such small little humans. It just makes such a big difference as these kiddos get older. We see some of our former preschoolers, even at the middle school, high school level, have have kept a group, a core group together. They look out for each other and it's really special. So and as Jamie had mentioned before, we have students, most of our students who do have I E Ps, receive speech and language services, occupational services. They will see maybe our physical therapist or a social worker or a school psychologist.
So we, Erin and I, both are the special education teacher and the general education teacher. So Stacy is just the classroom teacher. If her students have I E P goals and objectives, they will go to a specialist. Erin and I, we're both that, so we're very lucky. So we are the general education classroom teacher, but also we pull kids to work on their direct I E P goals and objectives. Just more pictures of great things for you to look at. So this is just kind of the the law for I D A, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. So kind of what we've all talked about, making sure that children have free and appropriate public education. That that becomes our responsibility when a child is eight, turns the age of three, making sure that they're in a least restrictive environment. So if a child is able to be in a public preschool and it doesn't need that I E P, then they can go there. But we also provide that for us and for them in our classroom. And then we do provide that, well, this town provides transportation. So we do have children, Stacy's are all parent drop off. We do have students that ride van transportation. So the van comes and picks up our preschoolers and puts them in their car seats and then we come, they come right to the school. Only an I V, yep.
So this was just some of the ways we find different students in the community. Child find is a really big, important part of preschool. So again, birth to three, we receive students, we just have a great transition from birth to three into memorial. That doesn't always happen for kiddos, parents aren't always aware that their child might have some delays or be, you know, struggling. So pediatricians do encourage families to reach out to us. We do a community screen monthly. We use a screening tool called the Bergant. And at each screening, there will be a speech pathologist, a special education teacher, an O T P T. And we take a global look at the child and then we decide from there what the next steps might be. If the student does not pass our screen, we will go into evaluation and we'll do it. We'll do more, a deeper look into the child to see where the areas of deficit are. If the child does pass our screen, we provide resources and strategies to help them succeed in the community or in their local preschool daycare. The daycares are amazing at reaching out to us whenever they have a student that they have concerns about. They, Coco was calling us back in August, when's your first screening? So it's really great to have such great support in the community. We do, they end up being a lot, you know, a huge resource to us for child finds. So we go out to the daycares quite a bit, we go out to give some support, some suggestions. But we also go out to observe children and offer some alternative, you know, strategies for them to use or to have them come in for a screening. Once we do see a child, we will, that we do have concerns about, we assess the child in all areas. We will then develop an I E P if necessary.
And then we have Smart Start preschool. East Hampton has had Smart Start preschool in our town for the last eight years. I've been the teacher for the Smart Start preschool program in East Hampton since it started. It's a grant offered opportunity by the state of Connecticut. And I think we found out last summer that it's like a forever grant now. We used to have to apply every like five years and I think it's a permanent thing, woo. So the purpose of the grant is to provide children with greater access to higher quality preschool education to help reduce the achievement gaps and reach most of our youngest learners. The town receives seventy five thousand dollars annually to cover a portion of the teacher's salary in the classroom. And like I said before, the ratio is one to nine by N I A C standards. And that's why there's myself and a para in the classroom and we are maxed out at eighteen. The smart school, Smart Start preschool program increases the number of preschool spots available in public schools to get the children comfortable and to get them the needs that they need. Our program is six hours a day, like I stated before. And our class provides support to children in all sorts of developmental areas, fine motor, gross motor, sensory needs, parent interaction and emotional regulation, excuse me. fine motor, gross motor, sensory needs, parent interaction, and emotional reg- regulation, excuse me. Um, our program also creates numerous student, numerous experience, excuse me, for students in the community. Um, I apply for other grants as well, um, throughout the community and elsewhere. We're unable to take the children on field trips, so they have many hands-on community. We go to the library, we get library cards. Um, I've already taken them to the pumpkin patch this year and picked apples with them. We go to the dinosaur museum in um May. Um, ever, anything we do that we just try to get them lots of hands-on experiences to enrich their learning. So, um, just like how they have birth to three and how they, you get into their program, there's requirements for Smart Start as well. Sixty percent of my class um has to meet the income eligibility. Um, so they have to be even below a certain means of income to get into my classroom or the Smart Start program, excuse me. Other factors to get in are if you have deployed parents, if your parents are incarcerated, if they've been incarcerated, if you were fostered, adopted, or if you're a multilingual learner. Um, our program has to have a teacher who holds an endorsement in early childhood education, which I do, and um, or an early childhood special education, and you have to be an employee of the Board of Education, which I am. Um, participation in the program also requires Memorial School, pre-k school programs to obtain and keep um NIAC accreditation, which we did go through a few years ago, and we're gonna start going through the reaccreditation process, which Mary and Joey are gonna speak to in a second. And the program needs to maintain the child on classroom ratio, like we said, which is the one-to-nine ratio, which we come.
So we'll talk a little bit about NIAC. Joey's gonna speak to this, but I'll just explain that NIAC stands for the National Association for the Education of Young Children. Um, these are the standards that are established for all uh early childhood uh settings, and it's an external accreditation process. It's a requirement of Smart Start, but I think it's really important to note um that when we first saw NIAC accreditation, Memorial chose to um ensure that all of the preschool settings have NIAC accreditation and reach those high standards. Um, that really cover a, a wide variety of, of programming considerations. So let Joey speak a little bit to that.
Sure. So this slide tells you a little bit about why you might want to be accredited. Um, as Mary said, through the Smart Start program, it is required. But you may hear about other public schools that are NIAC accredited that perhaps don't have a Smart Start program. So it is an option that some public schools choose, as well as private um nursery and daycare centers. And so, you know, really, the advantage to becoming NIAC accredited, even if you didn't have to, to hold, to um continue your Smart Start program, is that it is ensuring that you have quality preschool programming in your building and that you are working to meet a certain level of standard, that you are um fostering family um communication and relationships, strong relationships. So these are all things that we were already doing and obviously always want to continue, but the NIAC accreditation progr- process is a rigorous process. So just by going through that, you're really making a statement about how strongly you feel about your preschool programming. So the process for NIAC accreditation is complex, and it does include several steps. So I'm just gonna walk you through a few of them. Obviously, if you ever wanted more detail about that, that process, Mary or I would be happy to talk about it. But it, an overview of that process includes that you need to apply for accreditation. That's the first step, and it is a five-year accreditation. So this first accreditation happened not under my leadership. Um, Mary Park obviously was involved, and so was Andy Gonzalez, the previous um principal of Memorial School, and that was back in two thousand nineteen. Um, they came and did the final visit to our site, I understand, on March twelfth, which if you, March twelfth, twenty twenty, which if you remember, was the day before the world shut down. So schools closed on March thirteenth. These ladies worked very hard to make sure that they were prepared for that visit, and the next day, school shut down. Um, so we actually received that initial accreditation on May first, twenty twenty, in the mail, because no one was in school. Um, and that made us due for reaccreditation in May, uh, May first of twenty twenty-five, which would be this May. However, uh, this year is the year that the NIAC accreditation process is shifting, and they not only are changing their standards, they are also changing the accreditation process, most notably moving from a physical sort of binder portfolio um of both the program and the classroom into a virtual platform. Um, so they are shifting in a lot of ways. They were also streamlining the process so that it is better suited for programs like ours in a public school system versus a um private daycare or nursery school, which are just very different in nature. Um, so because of that shift, and because our reaccreditation date fell right at that time of shifting, we were offered the opportunity to take an extension for a year, um, which we chose to accept. Um, and that extended our accreditation to May first of twenty twenty-six and allows us to now become re-accredited under the new system. So we will um participate in the virtual platform. Our portfolio will look a little different, it will meet the new standards, and that way, when we have our new five-year accreditation, um, it will be all under the new system. Okay? So that's all part of just applying for accreditation, step one. Then you have to understand and show evidence of the nine quality standards, which used to be ten, but have moved to nine. Um, recognize our program strength and areas for improvement. Complete program and classroom portfolios, as I mentioned, which used to be a physical portfolio and now will be um, take place on a virtual platform. Host a site visit, um, which again, happened in twenty twenty on March twelfth. Um, a shift in the site visit is that uh they used to give a two, two-week window that your site visit was coming, and you would make sure you had everything in place. Not that we don't already, but, you know, cross every T and dot every I. Under the new system, we will not get a heads-up that the visit is happening, so it will be unannounced, um, and it will be within a six-month window of our reaccreditation. So our reaccreditation will be May, is by, May first, twenty twenty-six. So somewhere between November and May, we will have a visit next year. Um, but it does give us plenty of time to prepare. They are all already always prepared. Um, I have no doubt that their classroom portfolio will be ready to go. It's the program portfolio that I'll need to work a little bit harder on. Um, and that involves proof of really all of those standards, so not just what's happening in your preschool program from an instructional standpoint, um, but also health and safety regulations, um, how you communicate with families, what's in your handbook. So all of that gets included in um the portfolio as well. And then maintaining records of current professional learning related to those nine standards is something that we do on a regular basis. We keep a log of any um professional learning that the preschool team participates in. That will continue. And then at the end of the fourth year of accreditation, which would have been last May for us, but is now this May, uh, we have to formally apply for reaccreditation, and then once we are approved and we go through the process and hopefully receive our new accreditation on May first of twenty twenty-six, the five-year process starts all over again.
One thing I want to add to that is uh there are grant funds available for districts uh through the Office of Early Childhood to support the accreditation process. So uh Joey and I did apply for that grant, and we were awarded it. So it means that monthly, um, we have onsite technical assistance. Um, and the facilitator joins us from Learn, who's really um very well-versed in the NIAC accreditation process, to meet with the leadership team to help with the portfolio um for, at the program level, as well as to meet directly with Erin, Jamie, and Stacy. Um, and that's been a really positive and productive partnership, and it allows us to really go through any questions that we may have and ensure that things like board policy are up to date, and there's um a, a really high level of specificity and detail included in this process. So it is rigorous, um, and really ensures that our students, as you're hearing, get the strongest possible foundation. Um, and it's an excellent investment as our youngest learners become familiar with the school setting. It really aids in that transition to kindergarten. So the NIAC accreditation process is well underway. The team is working on that um on a regular basis, and we're really excited to continue that level of service for the community.
So back to you. So when we assess um our student learners, we use the Connecticut L. It's the Early Learning Development Standards. And it looks at children um across the different areas. So there's language and literacy, social and emotional development, science, cognition, mathematics, physical development and health, creative arts, and social studies. So these are the standards that we use when we're um assessing our student learners. I'll go through this really quick. Um, so we talked about play. Play is the most important way for children to learn. So this just kind of goes through all the different um play that we do. A lot of hands-on, you know, help with working on those communication skills, sharing, social, emotional, problem-solving, um, we do a lot with play. All right, so I get the fun facts page. Um, we have dance therapy that comes into all our preschool classrooms each month through a monthly grant. Um, she's fabulous, she's Miss Sharon. She used to be a teacher in East Hampton Schools, and now she works for the Andrea Rizzo Foundation. And the kids love her, there's a video clip of her at the end, you'll see it. The public librarian also comes in for storytime each month into our classroom, and then we also visit her at the end of the year, where the preschoolers get to get their first library cards at the public library as well. Um, preschool hosts touch a truck for the town every spring. Thank you, if you've been there, please come this March. It's at the end of March, it's a Saturday, we already have it signed out. Um, no, but truly, it's an awesome event for the town. We call everyone and anyone that we know that has a truck, and the kids love it. They bring the um people that um come with their trucks, donuts, and waters, and they hold their little buckets that say, "Please donate to Pre-K." And truly, it funds all the fun things we're able to do. To rent a school bus, you guys know the cost, I don't have to tell you that. But to like, to get a school bus to the public library, I think, cost me a hundred and eighty-eight dollars last year, and I only needed it for a mile ride. So just, you know, to look at things like that, that's why we do touch a truck, because we give back to the community, the community comes, but also it gives us a little funding to do the really cool things with the kids. And since my class has to be sixty percent in need, it's allowing them to have the cool experiences that they may not have. Um, our classes host soap drives, we host pet food drives for the food bank. We just donated over five hundred bars of soap from Memorial School for our soap drive that we just did. Um, it was just picked up on Friday and delivered. So we like to give back to the community as well and teach them at early age how important that is. Um, preschool participates in St. Jude Tricafan every year in um May. Um, we teach bike safety, we encourage all the parent support, and we raise money for children in need, not just from East Hampton, but others. Last year, I want to say we raised fifteen hundred for St. Jude's, but that's something we've been doing yearly. Um, we have sing-alongs, we have celebrations for our families three times, uh, excuse me, three to five times a year at least, um, where our parents are invited to come and see us. We just had a turkey show, there's a snowman show next Thursday at two, if you want to come and hear us sing. Um, no, we like to have the parents come in, we like to have them celebrate with us and just everything preschool has to offer. All right, well, when, so true story. So we had four really cute little video clips of all the kiddos, and when they were all on the same screen, they all started singing at once. And I said, "Guys, you should have kept it that way, it's like a day in the life of." No, but truly, this is Miss Sharon, the dance therapy, and this is just a little video clip of what it looks like with her dancing with our kiddos.
Should be music, correct?
That's okay.
That's all right.
The dancing, they look cute. All right, well, the second one was us doing um foundations, where you heard us going A, appalazi. Um, and it, it's all of them saying it, I promise, it's really cute, okay? And then the third one, we teach sign language as well. So when we teach letters of the week, we also correspond with sign language, and I promise they're doing it. Okay, thank you. And wait for it. Oh, and there's. They're up to the letter J. All right, they went up to the end of the video clip. So just a little preschoolness for you to enjoy.
Thank you so much. Um, you know, we really, la- last meeting, we got to hear about our high school counseling team at the other end of the um educational journey, and here you really get to hear about the very beginning of the educational experience for students in East Hampton. And I just want to thank Erin, Jamie, and Stacy again uh for all of your work on the presentation and being here and what they do each and every day. Um, it is, you know, the connections to curriculum between our preschool po- preschool program and um our kindergarten curriculum are very strong. Um, they really talked a lot about play, and, and it's referred to very often right now as purposeful play. Um, play is really the beginning of all communication and interaction, understanding the experience of your classmates and other people, but also learning is very much a social experience, and so building those foundations for how we interact in school. Um, it is fun to see, it's a, a joy to watch, but it is extremely difficult work and very technical, and takes a tremendous amount of planning and, and thoughtful implementation to ensure that our students are being exposed to valuable learning experiences, a safe environment, access to services that they need, and enriching opportunities that, um, we know how powerful those experiences are for our students, and um oral language, very rich oral language all day long, which is very critical for our students. Um, and so, again, thank you so much, and we're really pleased to share this to you, with you today. Yes, Nancy?
If, if sixty percent have to be under a certain eh uh income threshold, are we, have we returned anybody away?
The ratios are reviewed carefully, so um I would have to, you know, double-check. I don't know, Joey, if you feel like you know that off the top of your head.
Yeah, it hasn't happened previously. In fact, we do sometimes have um lottery space available in our Smart Start class. We have filled all of the, the spots with need, and there are additional spots available. Then um people who wish to be part of the program can have their name put in the lottery. However, this year, we did fill all eighteen spots with need.
I'm, I'm assuming that at some point, we're gonna run out of slots as population increases. How do we close the gap with a child in need if they don't qualify by income?
Universal preschool, right, Brad? So um, you know, you've heard a lot about universal preschool probably, uh, and, and it is something that we are just always hopeful will be um the next step for public schools, because to your point, you know, um, we are servicing a lot of kids in East Hampton, more than we ever did before in our preschool program, which is what we're so proud of, the fact that we have all of these programs. We're not only reaching kids who have identified need through special education, but also, you know, socioeconomic need or families in crisis for the other criteria that you saw on that list. Um, so I, you know, I don't have an answer to that. If we max our eighteen and there are five other students that, you know, were equally eligible, I'm not sure, um, you know, how we would meet the needs of those students. At this point, we do not have another preschool class, and this is the first year that we did fill the class, um, you know, from day one. Typically, we start with about fifteen, and we leave a few spaces open, and we did not do that this year. We started with eighteen, which is the max.
So if data is available, if the information's available, to show that we could get a cost benefit, that if we could start a preschool program, and that would cut down the thirty-something percent of children in the district needing special services later on, I don't, that would seem logical to me. I don't know if you can get, if you can fuck, package that up.
Like a second Smart Start program?
Well, there it is. You know, one of the things we've been chatting about is that there's an awful lot of people, a big jump, that uh are receiving services. It, it jumped to what, to thirty-two percent or something, something like that? And that just, you know, one out of three?
Yeah.
That seems, something's wrong.
Sorry, I don't remember with the original grant for Smart Start, but is more than one Smart Start classroom an option in a public school?
I'm gonna have to look into that.
Or just, or just the Pre-K. If you can, if you can get, if you can get the info that the Pre-K, which is probably, I'm just guessing out of part-time, is a little cheaper uh than a full-time teacher. But if, if you can convince people that I want to spend money on a Pre-K, universal Pre-K, that that's gonna save me a lot more money down the road uh with special needs students. well, I'd be all about that.
I decided to comment out a question as well. And I know a lot of it's just the way that things get set up through the state and funding and stuff. But the Smart Start program is phenomenal, wonderful program. But those are typically developing kids who have societal need. And it's wonderful that they're given that so they don't have those issues later. But your kids who are the high-risk kids, who if we're talking about special ed, are only getting two and a half hours a day instead of six. So they're getting like, less than half, but they're the more needy kids. So as opposed to, you know, back to your question about an all-day pre-K and the ones who are the highest at risk, to give them more, you know, services upfront to hopefully reduce the level of.
It would seem, it would seem logical. I don't know if you've got access to that kind of information. So there's, if I could just. An interesting path I'd like to go down.
Preschool, we can certainly, as we get into the deliberations, get the budget printed forward, just some talking parts as it relates to what are options that are out there if the board were interested in expanding preschool options. Whether it be, you know, the Smart Start program or whether it be just looking at the special ed, you know, elements of the preschool programming, you know, and you do elements of full day, you do elements of half day. Obviously, space becomes also a conversation that needs to be factored into all of it. And of course, you know, your enrollment, what will the enrollment look like? You know, depending on different models that you go with. But a very experienced preschool team that can certainly field really what would be some options that could be looked at or considered. And we could come to the board with those and ensure those have a future date.
Have a question. Couple of things. So I'm concerned about the classroom size. Do we, is, do we know ahead of time that there might be additional students coming that will need this? Right now, we're maxed out. If another student comes into the gesture, are we denying the student services or will be stretching? Well, how would be, what would happen?
The Smart Start grant is very specific about the class size. And the class is full at 18 at this time, and there's not a second Smart Start classroom.
So then, a student coming into our system would be left out?
We do not provide universal pre-K. So we can only, we can only fill the seats we have in that classroom. So we have a limited number of seats. And if they're full at that point, with the exception of the integrated, the Smart Start program has a cap. So once it's full at 18, it's full and there's not a second classroom.
So then, coming into kindergarten, you may have several students who haven't had this and may have behavioral issues and such that they want to address.
The discussion around universal pre-K in the state is such because it's a, it is an advantage to have a high-quality pre-K program, absolutely. The demands of, you know, if we think back, you know, 15 years ago, kindergarten wasn't even full day in the town of East Hampton. So we increased that service to ensure that every kindergarten student has a full day of kindergarten. And now we're expanding pre-K. But every time the demands of a grade level, you know, having the ability to sustain a full day, for example, in kindergarten, that's a different demand on kids today than even 15 years ago. So every time you expand a demand on a student, ideally, they have an experience to ready them for, to ready themselves for that. So that's why there is such a large conversation around the access to universal pre-K statewide, not necessarily just in this district. But it's a conversation about how would that be accomplished and what funding models can be established to support that on a, on a really universal level.
Have we noticed an increasing number of issues to justify perhaps expanding this? Because we have, for example, or if we might have had maybe five students, now we're up to 10 or 15 students in kindergarten that may have issues.
So data that we could bring to you is when we welcome our kindergarteners, every year, we go through a screening process that includes collecting information about their preschool experiences. And so I think that would be maybe meaningful data for the board about how many students are accessing preschool, whether it's through Smart Start, through the integrated preschool, or through one of our early childhood centers, and what percentage of students in East Hampton are not accessing preschool.
Yeah, I just, I personally like to get ahead of an issue.
Sure.
Rather than have it before us, then we have to react to it. And so I'm looking to see if we do have a problem or foresee a problem, that it'll be brought to the board so we can address it early. Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Sal, I would just add that, just to be, make sure that everyone is clear that for typically developing children, preschool is not required. So families have an option to send their children to preschool. And some of our programs are offering an alternate option. But they can also send them to community, daycare, or preschool program. The exception to that is a child who has already, prior to the age of three, but been identified as eligible for special education services. And then those children, we must accept on their third birthday.
And then, follow-up question. When you have students behavioral, for example, pulling girls' pigtails or punching, you know, kids, you know, what do we do in that instance? Do we try to encourage the kids to get along? But like, children, if they're being bullied, especially very young like that, will be scared of the other kid, don't want to be around them anymore and stuff. Do, how do we address those issues?
In general, in all settings, we're teaching proactively the expectations of the setting, giving children opportunity to practice those expectations. And as you heard the team discuss, there's morning meeting each day where we're really, you know, setting the classroom up for what the schedule is, what's expected, and making sure that the staffing ratios are strong to encourage positive rapport and interactions between students.
Okay, and we have the staffing and to handle this right now?
Yes.
So there's no issues that you certainly see?
The team described in the Smart Start classroom, for example, it's a nine-to-one ratio. So there are two adults at all times in that classroom, as an example.
They're also members of our school community. So all of our school rules apply to our pre-K classrooms, just like they do our K-3 classrooms.
Thank you to all of you. You have such a fun job, but we also know it's extraordinarily involved and very challenging. And we are so lucky to have you because you do a phenomenal job at it. So thank you for being here and to share with us tonight, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
All right. Unfinished business?
Very good. Thank you. Now starts the fully entertainment portion of our program tonight. On your package, folks, you're not going to have page two. It looks like that was left out. So the first thing, I'm going to make the motion to accept a recommendation of the superintendent of the Board of Policy Subcommittee to approve 3171.1, which is the non-lapsing education. Motion. Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make the motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent of the Board of Education Subcommittee to approve policy 6144, which is on controversial issues.
Motion?
I'm making all of them.
Matt's second. Thank you. Any discussion?
Well, controversial, that's the title line.
No, it's not. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chairman, I make the motion to accept the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Board of Education Subcommittee to approve policy 9325.2, which is the order of business for regular meetings.
Questions? Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chairman, I make the motion to accept the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Board of Education Subcommittee to approve policy 4118.11, dealing with nondiscrimination of personnel.
Matt's second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chairman, I make the motion to accept the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Board of Education Subcommittee to approve policy 4118.112, related to Title IX personalities. Second.
Thank you. Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chairman, I make the motion to accept the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Board of Education Policy Subcommittee to approve policy 5145.4, relating to nondiscrimination as to students.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Finally, with great glee, I make the motion to approve the recommendation and kind of make it worthwhile here. To accept the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Board of Education Policy Subcommittee to approve policy 5145.5, relating to Title IX as to students. Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Josh is an aye.
Madam Chairman, thank you very much.
You have earned your pay tonight, Mr. Barber. Thank you. Is there any future business? Hearing none. New business? We need to approve the 25, 26 Board of Education meeting schedule. Do I have a motion? Thank you.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Personal actions? We have none. Audience is citizens. I'm going to go out on a limb and say we have none. Calendar of events? Anything to note?
Just two things just to note. One is that I'm looking to do a superintendent's coffee hour on the 20th, which is the Friday, which is an early release. Yeah, I don't know that we're going to get much interest in that. So, but with that being the case, I may or I may not host that depending on what we feel we're going to get for a tentative. And the last is that we have an early release on the 20th. Just a reminder, all of our families before winter break. And I wish everybody beforehand a Happy New Year. I'm looking forward to being back in 2025.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a lovely evening.